Jenny, you heard it.
I got it. I'll email it out.
Not sure what's in the 2045 yet, but I'm sure we're gonna find out.
Hopefully you'll get covered in the rearview mirror.
Bye-byes. Go for a walk.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is official business or not, but I'm not sure that everybody on the commission knows that they did put me on the citizens review for the comprehensive plan. So if you have input into that, I, you know, talk to me and, you know, don't be afraid to jump in on those meetings when they're open to the public. I encourage everybody to do that. The more in that we get, the better, I think.
We had our first CAC meeting last week and I thought it went swimmingly well and loved the input and insight that was provided around the table, so.
Good.
And Jason, you know, one of the, one of the things that I made a comment on, boy, I sure wish they had Oakwood have a representative on that committee. You know, because even though they hear, you guys hear both sides, I think it's important for the citizens to understand a little bit from the developers and vice versa. You know, direct communication. It certainly didn't happen as well as it could have last time.
I appreciate that. You know, we'll share that feedback up the chain. For, you know, just to be aware of and just to think through as, you know, we have multiple engagement opportunities over the next eighteen plus months on this, on this effort.
It's all about communication, right?
Got that right.
Yeah. Okay, ready to get started?
Yep.
I will now call to order our planning commission study session. Please note, the live Spanish interpretation is not available for tonight's meeting. Tonight, we will be discussing drafting and adoption of statement and support of recommendation on ordinance two-two-six-six and ordinance to amend various sections of Article Three of the city's land development code, modified section twenty-one-five-two-six-six and establish a new section twenty-one-six-two-eight-zero as it pertains to subsurface extraction operations in the city. Staff is also requesting to establish a supplemental best management practices document to apply to all oil and gas facilities. With that being said, I know, Jason, you wanted to kind of kick us off and say a few words before we, as we get going.
Yes, and thank you, Chair, and obviously Commission. Pleasure to be back before you all. Tonight, once again, Jason Rogers, Community Development Director. Want just to take a moment to share or make a note of factors around one of the talks I know that you will be discussing tonight, and I think it just may help you in the drafting of your letter. But part of that item I want to make note of is factors surrounding discussion of reverse setbacks that were held with city council and councils reasoning on why the LDC that was provided to you all during the hearing was drafted to reflect that consensus on the issue. Now, I will say this as well. That being said, what I share with you is not an official or complete position of council, but once again, I think it gives you background into their thought process as a consensus. And council's concern on the matter included a desire to make sure that the reverse setback was consistent with the standard setback as was discussed to try to prevent health and safety consequences during the recompletions phase, and Dominic can speak more to what the recompletions phase is, and other activities during the life of the well. So I wanted to share that with you, and I hope that is helpful for you all, for your thought process as you continue to draft that letter on the reasoning in which you felt to make a shift, but I wanted to provide that to you if it wasn't provided to you last time, just for clarity purposes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think we understood that there is, you know, numerous study sessions, you know, involving the city council's development is, you know, from the first time that we saw it is a year past, right, Jason, to the time that it got presented to our commission and others. A lot of thought process went through, as you can see, in the overall development before it was presented to our commission. So. Dominic, I know, I know, before we kind of dive into the details of the letter, I believe you've, you know, we worked through a lot of the verbiage of it through, through that night. Do you have an updated section Exhibit G that you can share your screen with that we can see and?
Yes, I most certainly do. So while I do that, I'm actually gonna send you as the chair a word version, if you want to go ahead and paste this text into your eventual letter. And then I'll go ahead and share my screen here shortly. I need to be granted a screen sharing ability by whoever's the host.
Alexa, Alexa, can you do that or you want me to do that?
I'm not the co-host this time, actually.
Tricia?
Make, wait, what did you need? I'm sorry.
Screen sharing capability.
Oh, absolutely. One moment, please. There you are, sir.
All right. Okay. So this is the, the language that we had discussed. As Director Rogers mentioned, there is an additional sentence in there in subsection or subsection two that basically clarifies that the reverse setback does not apply to plugged and abandoned wells. So basically, there's the duration of time after a well has been drilled and completed, and when it's in its production phase, that's when the reverse setback would apply. And then at the time that a well is plug and abandoned, there would be the requirement to denoctate and easement in a fifty-foot setback in the event that there is the need for an over, over, overhead rig or anything that would need to come in and recap a well or anything of that nature. So clarifying language was put in there and that language was consistent with previous iterations of the draft. So the version that you're reading here, staff believes is all encompassing of the intent of the planning commission.
Does the commission have any, any questions for Dominic on that?
Can you make it bigger? It's super small.
I might have to do, okay, let me know when it's.
I can pick up my screen, Andrew, but I'm looking on a bigger monitor.
Yeah, I'm on a laptop.
Yeah, I got it. I'm a screen.
That's better. I can read that.
And just for your clarification, sections four and five, I'm gonna leave them off-screen since those essentially remain the same from the previous version. The main changes that we're discussing are in one, two, and three.
So right here, on item one, we're saying no new residential developments, and I think the key word is new that shall developments may be plotted within a thousand foot. So what we're saying in this one is that existing subdivisions would be exempt or no?
Yeah, so if a lot of, a lot is already plotted, it's entitled for use. So there would essentially wouldn't be a mechanism to restrict the plating of a lot that already exists. There would have to be some sort of amendment to an existing plat where there would be a certain circumstance where that might come into play. But for all intents and purposes, this is intended to be applied to new residential subdivisions.
Right, so anything that's already plotted, let me put it another way. You said if there are other circumstances, for instance, say council said, hey, we want to completely abolish and not play ball with oil and gas, I'll put it very harshly. They, would that be a circumstance that would be able to amend existing plats?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Well, you said, so with existing platted developments.
Okay.
And this says no new developments. So it said, if there was something extenuating as a circumstance, if you will, and say council comes up with something that they just completely say, this is what we're gonna do, would that be a circumstance that would be, have a negative impact on what is already plotted? Is there an arm to make that happen?
So for already plotted residential lots, as far as I'm aware, so the intent again was to restrict plating of new residential lots, and Matt Hader, I'm not sure. So thinking about the mechanisms of entitlement we have, we have the ability to plot lots, which in along with zoning, form an entitlement for a property. Obviously, residential homes have to go and get a building permit, but I'm not sure if we were to implement some sort of building permit restriction or something along those lines that would consist to a regulatory taking. I'm not, I'm not sure how that would work, and Matt, if you want to weigh in on that a little bit, but that's the only circumstance.
Yeah, I don't want to engage in hypothetical legal analysis of different scenarios. But obviously, you know, if, if we do something that constitutes a taking, then that would be a constitutional violation if the taking happens without just compensation. Right? So we can't just take something from somebody or restrict rights they already have without compensating them in some way. So I, to the extent, you know, I think maybe Dominic's earlier answer might not have made, made that, that aspect of it clear. So if something were to happen to an existing residential lot, there could be potentially a legal claim. Or if we were to do something to put to an existing residential lots, you know, we would have to do an analysis prior to doing that to see if there was something, how it would impact that person's rights. And, you know, maybe we'd reach out to that, that owner of that property and talk to him about some sort of compensation for that. You know, if that's the case. It's all hypothetical, but, you know, obviously, you can't take property without just compensation, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that was the answer I was looking for. Just to make sure that we're, anything that's already plotted, there, there would be some kind of mechanism or at least conversation to make whoever it is full, whole in the whole deal. Okay.
I think a turning point for me too and you is that, you know, every new well still has to come across, you know, planning commission and commerce, you know, city council approval. So each one is truly going to be taken on a, on a case-by-case, you know, basis. Because I'm sure there's going to be unique circumstances for, for each one.
Let me see if I understand this. So you're, you're saying that existing plotted developments have a different setback than areas of land that haven't been plotted. Is that what you're saying?
Do you want to address that, Dominic, or do you want me to address that?
I can address it. I, I think that that, that's certainly one way of looking at it. I think another, so the way that we're framing the discussion is that we're, we're talking about, so this is the circumstance where there's an existing well and there's new encroaching residential development around it. There, there certainly may be, we, we are aware of some certain circumstances in the city where there is a plug and abandoned well that's in proximity to already plotted lots. But we can't write the rules retroactively. So that's why this is proposed as new residential planted lots. So we can't go back and write the rules on what's already in place.
Right, right. All right. Go ahead.
Does the, the exhibit that they showed us last time, is that well existing well at this point in time?
So are you referencing the Oakwood facility?
Yeah, which one?
The one that was provided is the, the exhibit in common letter.
Yeah. Yes.
Those residential lots have not been plotted, nor has that facility been approved. So neither of them are out there.
Does the well, does the well exist there?
No, it does not.
Just, just for clarity on that, Dominic, is, is the, what's the name of the street that runs at an angle from the northwest down to the southeast?
In that filing?
Yeah, you, you recall?
I can't recall. Steve or Jason or Jenny might know. I know I didn't do the review on that.
I'm trying to, Steve, Tim, if you're on, do you remember the name of that road?
Is that?
Is this the reunion, Reunion Ridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that diagonal one is like Reunion Ridge Parkway or something.
Okay, and it might be that I think there, there may already be some residential lots plotted to the north of that roadway. Does anybody, does any other staff know that for sure?
Yeah, we, we have plotted, we have plotted residential lots north of that diagonal line. That is correct.
Okay.
As it pertains to the conversation regarding the wells in proximity of the, of the land facility, those lots that would potentially be affected within a thousand feet have not been plotted. If that helps.
You say they have or have not been plotted?
Have not been plotted.
Has the, has the PUD been been submitted and approved?
There is a PUD that's been approved for that area, but mind that that also requires a CUP, so you'll see that at some point as well.
Yeah, I, and I, the one I'm, the spot that I'm talking about is at the corner of Potomac Parkway and Ninety-S sixth Avenue.
That's the one I thought you were talking about, Dennis. Was that one?
Yeah, Dennis, that was, reunion has full entitlements for that. And they, if you remember, a couple of years ago, Oakwood brought a big PUD zoning amendment to you all. And, but yes, they, that's always, they have full entitlements and they're allowed to do their, apply for their CUP for that oil and gas site.
Okay, so both of those are in existence, and if I understand the Exhibit G correctly, that would prevent those houses from being built, even though they've already been titled. Is that, do I have that correct?
No, so when Steve says it's entitled through the zoning, they, they have an authorized land use, but they're still required to get a subdivision. So it's basically saying, it's the same way that you could have a commercially zoned C-three property somewhere in the city, but unless they obtain a development plan and other approvals, they're not entitled for that construction until it occurs. So.
So that was their plan, but it hasn't yet been approved?
Yes, they have, they have not gained all necessary approvals to begin construction on the homes.
So let me ask you this. So they're not entitled at this time. And so I say time is a very real factor all the time. So they didn't quite make the, the starting line, even though they started the race and warmed up and everything. I don't want to talk about individual sites. I really want to talk about the overall map and the, the lack of developable land that will happen with this thousand-foot setback. I think there was a map that was shown and it was really, really, I mean, it's small on our screens, but really, the impact is very, very large. And so to talk about, hey, you're not completely entitled to this, which stops development, which is adding to this conversation about, well, if we just write this as, well, whatever you're plotted today, we're out of trouble, but for later on, you're our master developer and, well, yeah, good luck. I mean, that's kind of where the balance is at, right? I don't want to talk this site, that site, this site. I want to talk about the setback of three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, or is it a thousand, right? That's kind of where I'm trying to understand the impacts to what we're writing so that council will understand our position that, yeah, a thousand foot really stops a whole bunch of development over there. Yes, it's large, but there's also large quantities that become undevelopable, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's a combination of both, Andrew.
So I guess I'm confused. What, what are you asking for? Commissioner Amador, because, you know, I know, I know you guys want to get into drafting, and I think that that your chairperson has already started some of that to work with you guys here during this kind of somewhat of a work session too. Are you looking for the, are you looking for Dominic to put, to find that mapping exercise that I think he previously provided? So you can see that comparison? Are you, well, you know, I don't know what, what information is you're looking for to try to supplement the information or data you're gonna put into this, the preparation of the communication effort council tonight? How can we help? How can we answer your question?
I'm just trying to figure out when I'm looking at setbacks for new residential lots to production sites. So the, we have setbacks for well count one, one dash ten, eleven to twenty-four, twenty-five or more, right? The, we have setbacks. But that's for something that's not entitled yet still? Or?
Correct. I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no lots there yet.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is the intent of what our recommendation was in this table?
Correct.
Yes.
So, so along the lines that, that Chairman or Vice Chairman Amador said, at this point, since there's not a well there, and it hasn't been permitted, you could build houses around an area, even though the well hasn't started within three hundred feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, so as I understand that, if.
Okay, so that's, that's point eight. So that's point eight. And then, and then the second one, if, if a well has been started to drill and somebody wants to build a house, they can't build it within a thousand feet at that point in time. But once the well and the rig has been taken off and it's, and it's an operating well, but, you know, that's just a pipe sticking out of the ground with some, you know, some cans around, then they could build within three hundred feet the way this is written. Is that correct? If there's only.
No. They can't move within three hundred feet. They can build up to three hundred feet.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I meant. Yeah, they can build outside of three hundred feet. So, so if they, if the well has started, they can't build for a period of time, but they could once the rig is off and the well is just operating. They can build outside of the three hundred feet as opposed to the one thousand feet. Is that, do I read that right?
If the ultimate count at the well site is gonna be between one and ten wellheads, then yes.
So like you said, the more, the more the well count, Dennis, the, the higher the setback, right? So. Why don't we do this? Why don't, I mean, why don't we lead into the draft? You know, that I had, and I think that'll spur some conversation and, you know, we can start, you know, jotting down some notes here from that. I'll show you guys where I'm at.
So it's my understanding then, Mr. Chairman, that you started working on a draft based on comments that occurred at last week's meeting, trying to get you the guidance that you wanted to put before council? And that this is what you're sharing with your other commissioners right now? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, I saw the kids there for a minute. Okay. So maybe, since none of you have seen this, maybe we'll, we'll kind of, I'll let you guys have a chance to read it and then we can kind of talk about outline and where we want to go so that we can kind of go from there, so. Why don't you guys take a minute to, can you guys see it all right?
Yeah, make it a little bigger, please.
Bigger? All right. Okay, let me know once you guys have read that and then we can kind of scroll down and work on the outline, like I said. I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah. I'm good.
Can you scroll down?
Okay, I'm good. You're fast reading it.
Yeah, I think that, from what I read, I think that captures everything that we talked about last week and the concerns we had about it.
Yeah. But the, the first part, maybe let's, let's start there. So here, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, we're getting, I mean, I, I think it was important to just say, hey, to make it simple, right? I mean, just, I'm sure, Andrew, you can attest of reading packets, right, from city council that are usually large and hard to, so what was the difference, right? I think it's good to give them a side-by-side comparison of what was the difference. So that's what this kind of defined, and I put in the letter, just so you can easily see what the difference was.
Yeah, I think the good thing there too is you get a visual of the, you know, like the elegance that Dominic put in with the phrasing of the first part, because it does address the health concern, but then allows the development to happen at the same time.
Any thoughts to change us here?
That looks good. I like it.
And then the second part is kind of the testimony, and then I copied some of the feedback that we received from, you know, to me, you know, some really key partners, right, in, in the overall development of, you know, Commerce City especially. And I, obviously, you know, like you said, I, I don't, maybe city council will read the entire, you know, meeting minutes along with, you know, the letters that we got, but that may not be reality. So, you know, I copied some of the key excerpts from those letters that I thought were pertinent. And you guys tell me if, if you, if you think there's other things that could be highlighted, or maybe this is too lengthy, even to scale this back a little bit, but wanted to make sure we, we demonstrated some of that comment and feedback that we heard from the community. And I think these were some of the, the, not all the stuff that we discussed, but some of the theme that we heard from, you know, Oakwood and for, right, it's, you, you brought this up, Dennis, I think, right? I mean, what happened to these agreements and the discussions that we've already had in place, right? We talked about, you know, just the ramifications of it, right, of what is the impact from a thousand foot to a, you know, a three hundred foot, you know, setback? I mean, that's clearly stated in, you know, what the Home Builders Association, Metro Denver said, I mean.
Do we know what the financial cost would be to Oakwood? I, I know, you know, I can, I can guess at what typically those homes would sell for. But there's a, you know, they have to build the home, they have to buy the land, they have to install the sewers. I, I am curious as to what financial, like a gross or a net profit figure that they would lose in losing those. And I forget how many, but it's four hundred homes or two hundred homes or whatever it is.
Well, typically, typically a developer will look for somewhere.
Well, typically, typically a developer will look for somewhere between a ten and a twenty percent profit margin. So if you have a half million dollar house, you're making, you know, fifty to seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. So if you say, okay, they're going to make seventy thousand dollars, and I think seven hundred homes was the figure that they threw out, that's, that's five million bucks right off the, right off the bat of profit. And that really doesn't take into account the investment they've made already in planning and, and, you know, buying the land and and, you know, corporate operation. Uh, the thing that, that, you know, I would, and I'm not sure exactly how to, you know, state it in the letter, but I think it's the city's responsibility to stay with their commitments that they made when people are going out and making those kinds of investments and not changing it after they've already spent the money and come up with the plan. Because had they known that in the first place, chances are they would have spent those assets or, you know, those expenses in other communities and, you know, that they have options to. And that's, that's, you know, that you, you, we have to maintain a, a, a good relationship with good developers, otherwise they just won't develop here. And that's happened.
Exactly right, Dennis. There's a lot to even before, you know, even the due diligence before the purchase of a land, right? You know, that happens along with the, the design that's set ever before a, a home is even contemplated on, or even started to go on site, the infrastructure that it takes, the design that it goes into place. Everything that gets presented to us is, is a long process.
God, and I, I don't know if, it, it just crossed my mind. I mean, I, I don't know if we want to, I'm not suggesting that we include that in the letter.
No, yeah, I think, I think it's important from my perspective anyway to, you know, keep the, the letter, you know, to the impacts of the city and not, you know, towards an individual developer, because you know, the city councils, they'll see the impact of, you know, if you don't have five hundred to seven hundred homes economically in the future. I mean, you know, they'll understand that, you know, versus, you know, just saying, hey, Oakwood's going to be out five million. I mean, you know, it's, I know it's an impact to them, but you know, I think we're trying to affect the city and not necessarily, you know, keep Oakwood whole, if you will.
No, I, I, I agree with that, Commissioner Dinger.
Yeah, and, and I agree with that too. But I think a strong relationship with the development community is part of the conversation, you know, in my opinion as well.
And I think just from what we talked about, that first bullet point that says the, the economic, so you probably just want to put the economic and legal ramifications of the thousand reverse setback would be detrimental to the overall development and future of Commerce City. I think you just say economic and legal ramifications, that pretty much sums it up in a nice way.
If I may, and I'm not, you know, it's, this is your document, but I just wanted, you know, make sure the record's clear here that, that when you're talking about legal ramifications, further down, there's a reference to regulatory taking. Um, this is all based not on advice you've received from your council. And in other words, this is based on public comment as referenced to you in public comment. So my concern is that I don't want there to be creating some sort of conflict between or misunderstanding on council's part that they've, that you have received legal counsel from the city attorney's office on something that maybe, or differs from, or was not given to them. So my, my concern would just be whether you or not, you might want to decide to clarify the source of these, those comments.
Yeah, I mean, it came from Adam. And when you read the, the, the letter from Fulton, Rider and Oakwood, I mean, they, they mentioned the, you know, the label ramification of this and what they, their position might be. Right? So.
Right, I guess my, my concern is that you're saying, you know, this determination was made on their representations of the legal ramifications. Your council might provide you with different legal ramifications. That's my only concern.
Put the disclaimer in small print at the bottom.
Yeah, we could put some wiggle words in there.
Well, yeah, what's any suggestions, Matt, and if you could on that?
I, I'm just trying to clarify the record. I don't know that I've.
Well, it's your job. Go, go and tell the council you didn't tell us anything.
I, you know, honestly, I don't want my, I don't want city, city attorney's office to get put into a difficult position based on representations as to legal ramifications. So that's, you know.
I think, I think maybe if we just reference in this one, you know, even just the economic, you know, based on the quoted, you know, statement that they had up there from the Home Builders Association where they bring in legal. And then it's in there, but it's not from.
Or we could say possible legal.
Yeah, I was going to say, put the potential economic and legal ramifications.
Or you can say, as testified to at the, at the public meeting. You know, or as present, you know, as presented in public comment, or whatever you want to do. Just if you're identifying the source, then it, it, it causes me less consternation.
So as presented in the public testimony.
Yeah, that's good.
Possibly more of a 1,000 foot version would be detrimental to the overall development and future of Commerce City.
Right.
And I would almost in, in our, where we say in conclusion, um, you know, we can add some of that we derive this from public testimony and, um, letters received or something like that. And this is, uh, this letter is solely derived by the planning commission. I wouldn't say solely, but is derived by the planning commission or something like that, because.
I, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to say that. Uh, just, just keep it short and sweet and as simple as possible without getting ourselves in jail.
True.
What about these other bullets? So I think this is important, right? This kind of highlights all the, what we fill out facts and this is truly coming from us, right? So. Um, the reverse setback, as currently proposed, represents an untested regulation that could expose the city to regulatory claims. Are, are we good with that? Or is, does that seem a little, need to be softened a little bit?
I, I would like to add at the end, I don't want to see the one, two, three on the end of the fourth bullet point down there where you say would result or, and, and I would say rather than would result, I'd say could result in significant hardships on current and future developments and the development community in general.
Could result in significant hardships on current and future current?
Uh, you, yeah, and that, no, no, you know, you, that was all right, but at the end put and the, and the development community in general. Because word spreads, you know, I, I, I mean, talk to some of the people, you know, from Shea, you know, and everything wasn't, you know, perfectly fine in their minds, which is part of the reason that they, they left. I mean, you know, there's stories on both sides, but the fact is we want to encourage people to develop here rather than discourage them.
All right, so period. Should these not be maintained, then this could result. Should there's nothing, then this could result in significant hardships in current? Current improvement and the development.
Think you do current comma, get rid of the.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, I know I had too much stuff there.
Current, future.
Comma.
And.
You have to have the word development.
Yeah.
That looks good.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
I think I would just note that my concern as to the first point is equally true as to bullets number two and three.
You like that?
Uh, that is my consternation and I'm not drafting, so.
Kind of legal ease a little bit.
You just, this is your document. If you don't want the language, you don't have to put this language in.
Those are the, those are the Matt CYA clauses.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is pretty soft language in this one. I mean, any landowner could challenge. I mean, I don't know if it's necessarily needed in this one.
Well, I, I, I would tell you this, that
Yeah.
they admit that any landowner could challenge this proposal is, is not accurate.
Yeah. The possibility of a landowner, the possibility of.
Or you just say.
They could challenge that. That doesn't mean that they would, you know, succeed, but anybody can sue anybody.
Yeah, maybe you just say any landowner could potentially challenge the city's proposed, right? There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, what about this next on landowners?
Okay. Colorado, Colorado Springs went through something like this back in the, uh, in the eighties with the restriction on water taps. And man, it, it, it had big ramifications on development for, you know, six, eight years.
Yeah.
So on that, do you want to, do you want to delete van and just put a comma after maintained?
Oh, yeah.
Or are you just saying? Cursor's at.
Let's see.
That's my cursor, my bad. Down in the, that fourth paragraph, after maintained, then this could.
Yeah, I don't even think you need then this could. I just think you could just say.
Yeah.
Not be maintained, comma?
I think so. Well, you might not even need the comma, I guess, but.
I don't even think you need this. Should be not be, be maintained, could result in significant, you know, a comma, could resolve, I don't know, this could resolve. It's up to you.
Should that is not be maintained.
Could result insignificant. I didn't even know you need this.
Should these not be maintained?
Yeah, you don't want to.
The plans could result in, you know, the, the ordinance could result in significant hardships?
Hey, I liked it how it was originally.
Thanks, Dennis.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's good.
Like, what are we talking about? Pronoun. We needed a pronoun or right in there. Okay. Um. All right, just last paragraph. Need more, less?
Yeah, I'm with Dennis on that one, just to keep it, you know, pretty concise and short and sweet. I think it sounds good.
Good by me.
Good by me.
I'm good.
Okay. What's the, uh, what's the logistics of getting this letter over to them? Is this something that I, you know, I email or is it something that comes from internal?
So if I'm correct, uh, Steve, Jason, I believe what we're going to do is we'll accept this on your behalf and we're going to put this in the packet for the next, uh, meeting on this case. Is that the what we decided we would do?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. So we would, we would put it in the, uh, in the packet with all their other materials. Um, so that's great.
And of course, if you wanted to mail a copy or something like that, uh, Mr. Chairperson, you could certainly do that if you wanted to address it, kind of, you know, possibly mail a copy to the mayor or something like that. Um, but we'll make sure it's in the package, make sure it's in the public record, of course, and they all see it that way.
Do we all give a, do we all give approval to John just right now to be able to electronically sign so that it doesn't have to get passed around?
Do we need to sign it or should I just put our names?
Just sent you my digital signature as a JPG. You can, you can, I'm done.
That's official. And I don't know if you, if everybody knows this, but the guy that invented DocuSign actually lives out here in Reunion, moved here a couple of years ago.
Yeah, well, John, I let you, you can just, uh, put it into some kind of script and put my name on there.
I can send it through DocuSign. But if everybody knows how to use it, it could take a little while, or do we just put our names?
Just put your names.
Just put her names in it.
Okay, so I'll kind of just leave it like this. Does that work?
How about, do you want to take out the line?
Yeah, yeah, take out the lines and just put our names down there.
I spent so much time putting in the lines. You guys are killing me. Just kidding. Okay?
Yeah, that looks good. And I would suggest too that we email individual, uh, all the council with the letter as well as putting it in the packet.
Okay. So can I, how do I get this to you guys? Can I email the group at this point in time? Matt, is that a? Or how do I legisically, can I email the entire group here or what do I?
Well, doesn't this come out as minutes, right, to review? I mean, this is an official meeting. We can get minutes. You can, you can have the, have it sent out tomorrow morning as the minutes of the meeting.
Okay. So can I email it to everybody then?
How about it?
Is that legal, Matt? Is he on mute?
He's on mute, Matt.
Yeah, this is all part of our, our public open meeting. Um, and of course, everybody's going to be able to see this, these addresses and everything too. So that's, that's fine. Um, you know, it just, just remember, like, um, communication, there should be no discussion or communication outside of the context of the open public meeting. So to the extent you're seeking, um, signatures or returns or something from people, then no comments. This is just to, to get signatures, is my, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, I think we're not even going to sign it anymore, Matt. So we're just, we're just distributing for everybody's records.
Oh, that's fine. That's totally fine.
Okay. And then I'll send it to you, Tricia, so that you could enter it into the, to that. Does that work?
It works. Thank you.
Just you, Tricia and Alexa. Okay?
Excellent.
Okay, what else do we need to cover tonight?
Was good, good feedback.
Thank you, guys. Good job on having a draft, by the way.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan, Dennis. We appreciate your work on that.
No problem. Happy to do so. Okay. Steve, are we having a meeting next month? Do you know?
Yeah.
What, what is next month? February or March? What month are we in?
February.
I don't know what day or what year it is. Um, we, we do have, I believe, two cases, uh, two regular public hearings for, uh, February. Yes.
Okay.
So that'll be good.
All righty. Thank you all. Um, have a good one. Go get some dinner. And, uh, our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, Jonathan.
No problem. Bye, guys, there.